Here later, he'll be in here. And we want to go ahead. Get started. Left five. First item of the discussion of the amendments to the retirement plan, your call.
And Chuck? I'm gonna let Chuck go up and talk on this.
Okay Chuck, come on.
Mr. Mayor. My father came at that, and I asked something. Um, Hayward had something he wanted to present to us, and I suggested he come during the citizens' public input. Are we gonna do that this evening?
There's no citizen input on here. No, nobody.
Oh, we don't do it? We don't do input at the workshop? I thought we did, I'm sorry.
I mean, we don't list it specifically, but sometimes you all invite them.
What is something that's gonna come up tonight?
He just had an idea about something, he wanted the council involved in, and I suggested that he just come during the public input. I didn't want to.
Let us find my spot. Go ahead with your pick, if y'all have a minute, I'll talk to y'all.
Mr. Attorney.
You want me to come back?
It's totally up to the council if you want it, you know. Here from here, it's a workshop, I mean, it's pretty important.
I think, very, I mean, if a citizen wants to say something, I don't know why.
He just had a good idea, that he was asking about the council being involved in, and I just suggested that he come to the meeting tonight since we'd all be here, but we want to go ahead and let him, you know.
Let them.
And then you can just have him, I just wanted to let you know why he was here and.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Well, the first of three items, I think, that Carla has, I think you guys have a copy. There's a proposed amendment to the pension plan. This is the pension plan that was recently thawed, you know, the defined benefit traditional pension. This is a required amendment. I'm really here just to try to explain or answer questions to the best that I can tonight, but it's not really anything that you have a choice about adopting, assuming you want to keep the plan qualified under federal law. All plans, private governmental, all plans have to amend for same-sex marriage by the end of this year, by twelve thirty-one of fourteen. It doesn't affect, for the moment, I'll say, it does not affect all aspects of marriage under the plan. For example, the plan pays a one-hundred percent survivor benefit to a spouse right now, for, at least for a lot of the retirees, when the retiree dies, the spouse would continue to draw that same amount for the rest of their life. This amendment does not apply to that. And that's probably the most common area where the idea of what marriage is, is important in your plan. But there are some relatively minor areas of the plan where it does apply and just, I mean, you know. Basically, federal law governs pension plans like this, at least in a lot of, a lot of aspects of those plans. So things like rollover, the right to rollover on employees, if you had an employee who died, for example, and they had an employee contribution to the plan. Well, a spouse is eligible under federal law to roll that money over, the return of contributions over to, like, an IRA or something. So the plan, right now, your plan says a spouse is only an opposite gender person, you know, lines up with Georgia law. But federal law, under this thing called the DOMA decision, Supreme Court decision, you can't, you can't restrict certain benefits of marriage to opposite gender spouses, you have to recognize same-sex. That, that does not mean that they certainly couldn't get married, you know, two people of the same gender in Georgia, but you could have an employee who maybe goes up to the state of New York and gets married to a same-sex partner. So it's a legal marriage there. We will have to recognize that marriage as being a legal marriage just for certain limited purposes. Again, not for that one-hundred percent survivor benefit, but for, like, the right to rollover money, that's the main thing. Carla, I was just trying to figure out where all it might apply. So it really doesn't have an impact on the plan. I will just warn you, though, just to give you a heads up, and I think Carla heard the same thing, she was last week up at the, a conference. It is very likely, in my opinion, that within a year or two, we will have same-sex marriage for all purposes that will be required to recognize. For the moment, this particular amendment is just limited to these very few things. But, you know, don't be surprised if a year from now Carl and I are standing here with another amendment that is broader. But for the moment, this is all you have to do. And like I said, assuming you want to keep the plan qualified under federal law, under federal tax law. It's not something you have a choice about, it just has to be done, it's sort of a housekeeping thing, has to be done by December thirty-one.
And then Patty Kiesler, who we have worked with before on our amendments, sending them to the IRS, we'll get that filed.
We ask you the million-dollar question. All that can be changed in probably a couple of years. This all came down from the federal government.
Well, because of that DOMA, the Defense of Marriage Act, you know, the Supreme Court struck down certain provisions of DOMA.
Right.
And so, as a part of that, what happened is that pension funds, you know, they get caught up in a lot of this as well. So the, the, the aspects of this pension fund that are governed by federal law, which again is like the right to rollover, is probably the most likely one to happen, but anyway, there's certain aspects of the plan that are governed by federal law, not state. They're governed by federal law. So anywhere, any aspect of the plan that's governed by federal law, you know, we've got to stay up to date with any changes. I mean, for example, a few years back, all plans like this had to be amended for changes in the military laws, requiring the plan to give benefit accrual for military service after nineteen ninety-four, I think it was. But anyway, you know, so there, there have been other areas where the plan historically has had to be amended from time to time because of changes in federal law.
A few months ago, with the transit system, which didn't pertain to us, but the IRS said that we had to.
You have to transit subsidy, you have to recognize that as part of compensation, which, you know, the plan has to say you will, even though you don't have transit subsidies, so.
Have you sure I understood, I heard you say something like they moved to New York, where they have same-sex.
It's not moved, if, if they go under this rule, the way we have to adopt it, you could have somebody who's a resident citizen of Tifton, who works for the city, they have a same-sex partner, maybe. They can't get married legally in the state of Georgia, obviously.
Okay.
Okay? But if they went off to New York, just took a trip to New York, or California.
And got married in New York.
Got married legally in one of those other states. We would have to recognize it here.
Only certain parts of.
Only certain parts of the plan.
The Georgia federal, your Georgia income taxes, if they don't recognize.
That's right.
Right.
This is federal.
It was, it's just, it's only for the, only for the parts of the plan that are controlled by federal law.
I see.
So it's almost like we're in this hybrid situation where for some purpose of the plan, we would not recognize the same-sex marriage. And I, the illustration of that would be with that one-hundred percent survivor benefit.
Uh-uh, uh-uh.
Okay? But for other purposes, like the right to rollover, we would have to recognize it.
The, the right to rollover, only that five percent contribution that they have been putting in, like our new plan provides for.
Yeah. And it has, I mean, this doesn't have any, there's no cost to this, it's not, it, it doesn't have any real practical impact to the plan. It's just that you, you have to make sure that your plan language complies, it has to be filed with the IRS so that they can approve it, you know, and, and so the plan stays tax-qualified. You know, so, like I said, for the moment, and now, you know, again, a year or two from now, my guess is that's gonna change, and for that one-hundred percent survivor benefit, we probably will have to start.
I hope I stay here when you come back at one.
I'm, I'm just the messenger, I, you know.
That's right.
But, but I mean, it's, it's, you know, it, if that happens, it's gonna be what it's gonna be, and we just all have to live with it, you know. But for the moment, this is what we have to do.
That's why we live in America.
That's, that's right.
I like this one, I'm sorry. All right.
So.
Well, I understand, anybody else got any question?
You going with the next one?
Uh-huh.
The next one is an amendment to our flexible spending account. Beginning January fifteenth, the IRS is permitting participants to carry over five hundred dollars of unused funds. Say, in two thousand and fifteen, I contribute twenty-five hundred dollars, which is the max. I know at the beginning of two thousand and sixteen, I'm gonna need three thousand dollars for a procedure, so I plan to only spend two thousand dollars of that in two thousand and fifteen, and then I can carry over five hundred. This kind of goes again, or, or updates the use-it-or-lose-it plan. Where now, of course, if it's more than five hundred, and we rarely have anyone in that situation, most people are down to nothing by mid-year. Our employees really like the flexible spending. But anyway, this, this will just allow our employees to carry over five hundred dollars of unused money, funds. And so, our, what's called the cafeteria section one-twenty-five plan needs to be amended. So the resolution is to allow Larry to sign that agreement.
That's to come into compliance with Obamacare, is that, that is part of the law?
Kind of, I mean, it doesn't have to do, it's just, you know, some things that the IRS, they have, they've increased the limit on the health spending accounts to sixty-five hundred and fifty dollars, and, you know, over the years, they've decreased the limit of the flexible spending, and so this helps with the usual lose-it, where you don't have to lose that much. Okay?
Okay.
Good with that? Next.
Any questions? Item number three, three percent COLA for the retirees.
And this is just the standard, what we have to do, you know, every year, in December, to provide for the three percent cost of living adjustment to eligible retirees as of January the first.
Yeah, I wish y'all would call the state of Georgia and talk to them. I'm a state of Georgia retiring, they haven't given us COLAs in about five.
So that, that COLA increase is not mandatory, that's at our discretion?
It is. It is, yes.
And it, I have one more question if I may, the financial implications, this is increase in payments of eight twenty-five eighty-five.
I went, what I did was took our pension plan, or the pension li, retiree list for December the first, and looked at the ones that would get the three percent COLA, and added the three percent, and it's eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, bottom line.
Okay.
For the whole year, increase.
And just, just so you're aware, when I come up with the city's contribution on the funding side, the actuarial side, I have already taken into account these future COLAs to the, to this eligible group. So it's, this is not gonna affect the funding of the plan, other than, I guess, if you didn't do it, then the regular funding would go down a little bit, maybe, but, I mean.
Well, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in the whole, I mean, there's a hundred and fifty-six people, retirees, there are twenty-nine that are eligible. So that's why it's only a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Thank y'all, thank y'all very much. Okay. If I could break away just for a second, I'm. I wonder what you say this one, oh, this for Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Am I supposed to read this?
No, sir, I just wanted to get all of you to sign that, if you want to send.
Okay, I'll be passing this around while the meeting's going on. Item number four is a discussion. I'm sorry. Yeah. We're not gonna move to number four right now. Five, I don't wanna break in line, but if, I'll go if y'all want me. Okay.
Can I, may I approach y'all and hand y'all something?
Sure.
Oh, Mr. Allen.
I'm sorry.
Here you go, Your Honor. Here you are. Your Honor, number two. Here you are, Julie Smith.
I thank y'all for letting me come and speak to you. I, I've been, we've been brainstorming, I had a meeting with MediaCom about six days ago. We found out three or four things that maybe we didn't know, but we're getting a little smarter. Number one, we're coming up on our thirtieth year in broadcasting in Tifton. We've been doing this thirty years. We also found out that we are the number-one local channel on MediaCom. We, we, of course, that's pretty easy because I think we're the only channel that shows all local stuff, okay? So they might edge her a little bit. Another thing that I wanted y'all to know is that we are bigger than Fox in Albany. We have more homes than Fox in Albany. Right now, we're pumping our signal into about, probably about anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifteen thousand homes in the whole system. And another thing we're proud of, we are on plant now also, which gives us the broad spectrum and the full spectrum of Tifton, where Tifton is our number-one concern. The other towns are important to us, but the beauty of the other towns, and we're in nineteen other counties, the beauty of the other town is, we get to send Tifton businesses into those counties and invite them to come and shop in Tifton, Georgia, with our mom-and-pop stores and bigger stores, and we all benefit from it through SQUAS money, et cetera, you know where I'm coming from with that. But anyhow, so why am I here today? I'm here for the first phase of a big thing that I want us to do. Number one, I want to invite each one of you, councilpeople and the mayor, and I, I'd even like for Larry to do one, or anybody else you want to. There's no charge for it. I'd like to invite you to come on and invite people, I want, I want to do, maybe meet you downtown, film you, and let you speak from, from your heart, and invite people to come to Tifton and shop in our stores in Tifton. And this is a warm and fuzzy thing that we're just wanting to do for the community, as a give-back for supporting us for thirty years. And it basically was a system of, I'm Hayward Fowler, I've lived in Tifton my whole life. I'd like to invite everybody in surrounding counties to come in and shop, we've got some wonderful stores and great places to eat, et cetera, et cetera. In your case, the mayor, councilperson Julie Smith. I want to invite y'all to do this, and I want the county to do this. And we want to keep this running year-round, and we felt like Christmas was a good time to kick it off. Our approach this year is, and this is our slogan, what can we do to make it better in Tifton? And what we're trying to do, I think if we put money in people's pockets, we'd probably help them pretty good to be at it. So we know, we also know this, we know that not every store in town is doing great. But we know that in these hundred thousand homes out there, there are people that's got some money to spend, and we want them to come to Tifton and shop. We, we believe that we're the largest, and the biggest way with the most numbers to get the word out about Tifton. We're bigger, far bigger than GAZET. And we won't, we're not bigger than Channel Ten, of course not. But you can afford, you know, most people can afford to use us to advertise. And we just thought it would be a great thing if y'all would agree to do it, to let the council come, and I can meet you downtown with a schedule, your schedule, we'll do it kind of impromptu, we won't over-earse. If you want to write something and be totally prepared, you can. But, you know, if you don't say anything but your name, and I'd like to invite you to come to Tifton and shop, we got hundreds of stores, or something like that. I'd love to have you, and I'd love to have you do that. And, and the idea, of course, is for us to be the shopping hub. And that, that's, that's why I'm here today. And on another note, we've got a whole bunch of other stuff interesting that's gonna come up this year. As we come to our thirtieth, we, we're gonna have a, a lot of fun with our thirtieth anniversary and, and the figure. And, and on one final note, 'cause I know y'all busy, I've seen the list. We found out something the other day, y'all may get a kick out of this, and I haven't figured out how to parlay it into anything. But we found out that we are the number-three most popular English-speaking channel in South America. I said South America, did I? In South America, we're number-three in Peru, Venezuela, and Honduras. Now, how many people can see us in South, they said, we're, we broadcast from a satellite down there. They said anywhere from three to ten million people. And it's, it's pretty big, but they ain't no money in it, so it's like waving it, waving, you know, sticking your hand out, waving in the car, or going down a road, saying, "Hey, everybody, I'm in a car." But, but our, our, my little hobby has turned into a monster, and a good one. And we're still positive about Tifton, we still love the town. I know we're in other towns, and we love those folks too. Okay, thank you. We love all those people too, but, but we love Tifton best, okay?
And we know that, Hayward, we thank you very much.
Have your person get in touch with me, and we will schedule, or you call me yourself, and we'll do this. I'm gonna leave, but I have something I gotta go do.
Appreciate it, thank you. Item number four, the discussion of the DORMA amendment. My Marla retail, we're taking, first through.
Yes, sir, we received, and that was the one from Marla, we received an application for rezon for fifty-seven point seven four seven acres on the west side of Tifton, off of Hunt Road. We have reviewed it, we believe that from a standpoint of our staff, that it is recommended that we rezon this property. It is going from city of Tifton wholesale light industrial to city of Tifton general business, that is more conducive with that area. It is also part of an ongoing development project for that area. We also sent this through to the planning zone, and it was unanimously approved. And our recommendation is that it is, that it be approved, or that any questions related to that piece of property. This is the big tract that's next to what used to be the, what's the name of the plant?
Fort Nuremberg.
The plant, it's the big tract north of Hunt Road.
It goes out to Carpenter off of.
Yes, sir, it does include actually one small tract out there, I mentioned, that's less than acre, point nine-eight acre out there, that's, it has butt to that road.
That's, that's between Hunt Road and Old Railroad bit right there.
That's right.
Any questions?
Good venture.
Any questions on that? Okay.
Yeah, Burris, I think you got the next one.
Yes. The next one, I'm not sure what order they are, but these next two are basically together. Received an application for annexation for two point one nine two acres on parcel zero zero four seven C dash oh two two, and with that concurring rezon, and for the same area, the annexation will be coming from the county into the city. It's a hundred percent annexation. The zoning change, which I know I'm doing both at the same time, but the zoning change would be from Tiff County General Business to City of Tifton General Business. This is a direct part of a ongoing development plan for that area.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'll see you. Thank you, Burton, that was easy, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item, Larry, is the discussion of the amendments to ordinance regarding criminal regulations.
Mayor, if I may, can I take number seven, number twenty-one, and number twenty-two all at the same time, because they're all interconnected?
Yes.
As you know, we, y'all approved at the last meeting, the solid waste agreement with Goldman Environmental to take care of the collection of our solid waste within the city limits of Tifton. We kept looking at it, and when we started looking at that, and then tying it back to the solid waste ordinance, which is number twenty-two on your list, on the agenda this evening, we discovered that there were some discrepancies between what was said in the solid waste ordinance and the solid waste agreement with Goldman Environmental. Now, the agreement with Goldman Environmental is primarily, it's definitions and clarifications, there is no substantial substantive change in the agreement with Goldman Environmental, bottom line didn't change or anything. With one exception, and that was a typo on the addendum A, and that was a recycling rate for one time a month. It was six dollars lower than what it was supposed to be, and we corrected that. All of these corrections and changes to the agreement have been gone over on two different occasions with Mr. Hobbie, Mr. Willmott, and Mr. Goldman. So we're all on the same sheet of music here. The fifteen thirteen is still fifteen thirteen, it didn't change a bit.
Okay.
Additionally, there were some changes, there were some things in the solid waste ordinance which should have been in the environmental ordinance, which is number seven on the agenda. So when we started going over the solid waste agreement with Mr. Crowe and Mr. Hobbie, we discovered that there were things in the solid waste agreement, or ordinance, that needed to be in the environmental ordinance. So those, it was a domino effect, so we have corrected the solid waste ordinance, and it agrees with the solid waste agreement with Goldman Environmental. And we've taken the items out of the solid waste ordinance that should be environmental, because there were credit issues, i.e., littering was the biggest one, burning, and there was a couple of other items in there that got moved over. But those changes have now been made to the environmental ordinance, which is chapter thirty-eight in the Code of Ordinance. So we have given you some little light reading, if you want to go through theirs, and I think the agreement's highlighted with the definitions that changed. There were actually some definitions in the solid waste ordinance that were, for lack of a better word, these didn't make any sense for them to be in there, so they were taken out completely. And the new definitions for all of the, that agree with the agreement and the ordinance are now in both of them. Do you have any questions about those three items?
I just need, I'd like to bring up what I talked with Rob about today. In that section, under the environmental section, section thirty-eight, I think it is, Rob?
Yes.
You want to talk about that, about, or you want me to mention it, or?
Go ahead and mention it, and then I'll pull it up.
Section thirty-eight in the environmental part of this ordinance, section thirty-eight dash two three three deals with maintenance of property and sweeping litter into the streets. And section B of that section says, no person shall sweep into or deposit into any street sidewalk for accumulation of litter, dah, 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 dah. I'd like for us to also add that it not only not be allowed to go into the street, but to adjoining properties. I get a lot of complaints from people saying, you know, X, Y, Z yard company came, and they blew all their debris into my yard, or that kind of thing. So that, just that one little addition of, of just making sure that that law, debris is not blown into adjoining properties that do not belong to the person whose property is actually being cleaned up.
And if, and when y'all read through these, the ordinances, the solid waste and environmental, if you find anything in there that you would like for us to address, or change, like Julie just did, or whatever, if you'll just email that information to me, I'll get it to Rob.
We'll need to do that before, before the December first meeting. Okay.
And I'm really glad about section thirty-eight, two thirty-four, because we get a lot of complaints about that, too. That's the one about being able to throw things out in people's yard shoppers, and they accumulate at vacant, vacant properties, and I'm really glad that's there.
So that does include shoppers?
You can, a shopper, you know, a multi-page document can be delivered, thrown out at your residence. But if you don't want the shopper, and you call the shopper, you tell them, "Don't throw that stuff at my house," then they can't throw it at your house anymore.
Well, I'll get with, with that. We can add something there for that. I get a lot of complaints about this, I'll pick mine up, Tony Gompf.
No, that's, it's there, it is there, is what you're saying.
Yeah, if you call them.
If you call them and say, "Don't throw it in my yard anymore," they can't throw it in your yard anymore. But if you, if you don't call them, they can.
Section B says they can put it in your yard. Section C says, if you call them and say you don't want it in your yard, then they can't put it in your yard.
Okay, I didn't see that here, I just saw the two thirty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
All right. And that took care of seven, twenty-two, twenty-one, right?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna move on now to section eight, discussion of the bank replacement proposal for GFA refinancing. And Lois, that might have been somebody everybody gave us, is that correct?
No, I gave you, I'm just setting, sorry, didn't turn my phones off. I gave you a quarterly financial report for fiscal year fifteen, ended September thirtieth.
That's item number eight.
Just for your review, and.
Chief of refinancing?
Yes. If you have any questions or anything related to that, once you review it, we will.
I want number eight here, Mr..
You're number eight.
The handout that Lois gave you was the financial update, for the first quarter of fiscal year fifteen.
Okay.
Okay, that was the overview of that. What she's gonna talk to you now about is GFA refinancing of the GFA loans.
Right.
I got ready for me before I expected you to.
Okay.
What you have before you is a notification of the bank placement proposal for GFA refinancing. And I just wanted to give you a little background on it. As you know, you know, for the past couple of years, we have been working on reducing the debt, you know, for the city of Tifton, and refinancing where possible in order to lower the interest rate, and, and that, and looking at all the possibilities that's available to us. In May of fourteen, we refinanced the GFA two, or we did refinance, we paid off the GFA two from some SQUAS four dollars that we had available, and saved some twelve thousand dollars. That was not a large loan, but it was like about a two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollar loan that we were able to pay off with SQUAS four dollars that we had available. So that was one of the things, but we also had two other GFA loans, a GFA three and a GFA four loan that was taken out in fiscal year two thousand and two, two thousand and eleven. And they were with an interest rate, the two thousand was at a, with an interest rate of five point oh five percent interest rate, and the eleven was at a three percent interest rate. One of them was, and they were both financed for a long period of time, twenty years, one of them was ten years, and one of them was twenty years. So what we've been doing over the past several months is, first of all, we look for our financial advisor to. our financial advisor to help us with what would, what would be the best way to refinance these, these loans. So, we've been working with, uh, Stephen Incorporated, Bill Johnson, he's a financial advisor, and, um, we looked at various possibilities, including discussions with Jeep to see if they would actually lower the interest rate, or either refinance for us, and that wasn't in their policy. Uh, and then we started looking at the market to see how the interest rate was fluctuating over the past year. And of course, as you know, it went down, it went up, you know, it's, it's been fluctuated. We feel like it was time for us to go ahead and take action with, uh, the interest rates as they are right now. And so, we, um, sent out twenty-one bank proposals to ask them to give us a, uh, a bid on, on the refinancing of, uh, both of these loans. And, um, this agenda item is notification that those bids went out, we're supposed to receive them back in tomorrow. Uh, and, uh, hopefully, uh, they will come in lower than the two point two twenty projection that we, we had on the agenda item. Um, we current, the current outstanding debt is three point three million. We're projecting the new debt to be three, little over three million, with a savings of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. So, we're, um, we're hoping it'll come in a little bit lower than the two point two O. That is a rate that is surrounding the community received on the recent similar bond issue. And, uh, so we're hoping it's gonna come in a little bit lower than that. But if we get the two point two O, then, uh, that's what our savings are calculated on.
Good.
But we'll know tomorrow. We'll, um, have a resolution for you on the, um, first, and, uh, if, if we receive, you know, the bids back and they award it, we, we have a, a good result. And then, of course, the closing will be December the eighteenth, uh, if everything goes as planned.
Right.
Didn't, didn't that also reduce the length of loan by eight years?
Yes, it did. There was one of the loans that was refinanced up to thirty, twenty, thirty-two, and it reduces that loan to a ten-year loan. And it also has, uh, an option in the bond issue that we can call it within five years if, if we want to. So, it has a callable issue, callable call.
I know, but they bill you anytime, that's good. That's great. Good news, Lois, thank you.
Any, any questions y'all might have?
Thank you. Say the right one. I have number nine, the discussion of ordinance providing for disposal of surplus property. This is Larry, right?
Mayor, you may recall, um, several years ago, city council gave the city manager the, uh, magnitude to surplus property up to thirty thousand dollars in bay. Well, if we did a resolution, uh, of the ordinance, uh, found the city manager to do that, uh, basically it says that we could just, the city manager, manager could just basically kinda get rid of it however he wanted to. And we've been using government deals to do these things. Well, come to find out, when we start digging into it, there's a Georgia law out there that says that you have to follow certain procedures. Basically, it says that if you're a municipality that's going to surplus property, they have to do it the old way, like they did when they sell property at the courthouse steps.
Or sealed bids.
Or sealed bids.
Property, you can sell something at five hundred dollars without going through the advertisement, sealed bids, or auction requirement.
I'm sorry, there. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it.
So, what we've done is we re, what Rob's done is he's rewritten the ordinance so that our ordinance complies with Georgia law, which basically says we have to go through the process defined in Georgia law, uh, send it out for bids, sealed bids, or sell it at courthouse, auctioned off, or whatever. And then, if it doesn't, if we don't get the highest value for that particular item, uh, then the manager can dispose of it in, uh, several different places. He can salvage value, uh, sell it to the highest purchaser, or actually just junk it. So, the ordinance is now correct, is, we're in compliance with state law, and, uh, and that's what's before you tonight. Be on the agenda for December first.
So, we have my corrects. For how many years have we do it currently?
Keep on going there, man.
How many of us are getting locked up, like? All right, but I'm glad we found, that's important. Thank you, Larry. The resolution providing for new alcohol beverage license, uh, what's wrong? It looks like you got several of those right there in the room.
Yes, sir, I have eleven resolutions.
Definitely.
And what I'm gonna do is break them down by new applications, amended, and why they're amended.
Okay.
Okay. Um, all of these backgrounds came back completely clean, with the exception of one. Uh, that's a new manager for, um, the Hilton Garden, and his was a reckless driving misdemeanor. So, I, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna look at that too hard. Um, he's twenty-five years old, he's been driving now for nine years, and that's, that was the violation, so, um, we're still recommending approval.
Well, he drove a good state in my plate, though.
Yeah.
He good, too, yeah.
So, items, item number ten, number eleven, and number thirteen, which is, the local is going to be where Verona's used to be, uh, Hand and Stop, you all know, is on Twelfth Street, and J and J Food Mart, uh, on Tifton El Dorado. Those are all new applicants, all new owners of businesses, so the staff is recommending approval of those, those three. Like, once again, the background came out good for them. Um, item number fourteen is Sunmar, they're requesting amended alcoholic beverage license. They are asking to delete their wine, their current wine license. So, that's the reason they're on the agenda. Staff recommends approval of that one.
True.
Um, number sixteen is A one Foods, they're, they are asking to add wine to their alcohol license. Background on this music act was clean, so we're recommending approval of that one as well. Um, item number fifteen, excuse me, item number twelve, number fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and twenty are all changes in management. All of their backgrounds came back good, so we're recommending approval. And as far as I know, my list buddy can tell you differently, I don't think we've had any issues with these folks. Was that quick enough for you?
Oh, good, quick. Any questions for Miss Ronan? Okay, sounds good. Well, that brings us on down to item number twenty-three, the board report, Miss Ronan.
We have the Keep Tiff Beautiful Board with a couple of expressions coming out in December the thirty-first, um, in, uh, Donna Carter and Jimmy Deal. I sent, um, an email to each of those folks and asked them if they were interested in serving again, that I would be presenting, um, this to you all tonight. Donna Carter does want to be reappointed. I've not yet heard from Mr. Deal, but I will make sure that, you know, I'll go back, go back to him between now and the regular meeting where you will take action, so I can find out about that. Um, and also a reminder of the zoning board of appeals, we have two vacancies, or two open spots. And we got an application from a gentleman by the name of Curtis Akins. He's in the packet, his application, and he's interested in serving on the board of appeals.
I think I met him the other day.
You, you know him, he'd be an awesome board member.
He's retired US Navy.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What board he wants to serve?
He wants to be on the zoning board of appeals.
The only board of appeals.
You know him?
His application is very commendable.
Hey, there, Mr. Perry.
Hey.
How's everybody doing?
And that's my report. And I would like, would you all like me to put this on the agenda for December first for consideration?
Everybody's playing. Everybody else can put this on the agenda? Chris, we were just going over...
Which number is that?
Application, we're on item number twenty-three, board report.
Oh, okay.
Sit down, make ready, go, brother. We've gotta go back to item number two through, no, I'm kidding.
Okay.
We're all down to twenty-three.
Okay.
And Miss Ronan, we're just asking, when you put that on there, we've got, uh, if you'll look behind tab twenty-three, uh, well, it's on the computer, and you'll see we've got a good applicant on the appeals board. And she's also gonna check on the, uh, on the, on the other boards, and see if Jimmy Deal wants to remain on Keep Tiff Beautiful, Donna Carter does.
Okay.
And, uh, it would be a real good purpose to keep on there. She'll check with Jimmy and let us know. Okay, Miss Ronan?
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
That's all I know.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, we've got something that's gonna interest us, mainly gonna interest all of us big time, and the citizens, big time. And that's item number twenty-four, the discussion of city halls moved to the mine. In fact, I talked about that on Tea Time today.
Good.
And I was asked, "What do you do with the old building?" And I said, "We're gonna sell it." Because Patrick had water, he run us all out of town, and we did. He wants it all back on the tax, tax rolls. Tell us about the mine, Brother Larry.
Well, before we get to the mine, let me just touch a few set of stakes here. As you know, Thanksgiving's coming up, and city halls will be closed, but Thursday and Friday. And also, Christmas is coming up, and city halls gonna be closed Thursday and Friday. And New Year's is coming up, and city hall will be closed Thursday and Fri- Friday.
Sure.
Now, they said that. There's about three weeks, a three-day week, so there's... Uh, and also, unless there is an absolute need for it, uh, because of everything that's gonna be going on, if y'all, it's okay with council, we will not have a workshop in December. Is that okay?
That's fine with me. You'll get an argument from me, I don't know about anybody else.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get pretty heavy tonight, but we can...
Yeah, we're pretty heavy, too.
Also, put on your calendars, December sixteenth at six-thirty P.M. at the Conference Center will be the City of Tifton Christmas party.
I did that, but Ronan, you canceled it.
No, sir, I didn't cancel.
That is a...
I got it canceled, I can show it to you.
Yeah, I canceled, but it came through again.
Why did it do that? I didn't cancel it, I'm not scared.
I was, I was...
Well, we're doing canceling Christmas.
Yeah, Ronan had just talked about it today.
I got it accepted to go back from you all twice, so I wonder if...
Uh-uh, 'cause I never accepted, 'cause it got canceled before I could accept it.
Exactly. Uh, here's mine, it says canceled.
I don't see where mine got re-scheduled.
It could've been because it listed just department heads, and the second one went out all employees.
So, yeah, I sent one to, one group, and then sent one to another group.
It canceled the original one, 'cause you said it twice.
Yes, that's true.
That's probably the one.
Why did it do that, though? 'Cause it was just two separate groups.
Mine is still canceled.
Should've been just two, you know?
Well, add it all back.
Anyway, it gets not canceled.
I didn't get it.
Okay, so it is not canceled.
I sent it to you, too.
Now, now, the board...
We've never invited Venturi.
That, that man's...
You're proud, you're losing control.
Yes, right.
I'm sorry.
What we're gonna do is we're also gonna have E S G celebrate our Christmas with us as well.
Excellent.
And, uh, so we get the old employees that were with us before, we get the current employees, and we're gonna have all the retirees there.
Excellent.
So, we're gonna have a great Christmas dinner at the Conference Center.
That is fantastic, Larry.
Back to moving into the mine. Uh, December eighth, the final walkthrough on the first, uh, first floor and basement are scheduled. And I've, I spoke with Mac, and he has agreed to allow us, provided we don't run into any problems, to allow us to start transitioning from the fire department back into city hall. The plan, if I understand it correctly, and Ronan was gonna jump in here and fix me, if I get mess it up, uh, we're gonna move the second floor's people in, uh, at a given time. We'll work, we're gonna meet with, uh, E S G tomorrow, Scott, and we're gonna start figuring out what the timeframe's gonna be for this move to transition back into city hall. But at some point in time, and I think it's the first, last week of December, is that right, the three-day week?
Yes.
We'll shut down.
Yes.
We're gonna have to close city hall, because we're gonna be moving customer service back over and to operate in two different locations, if it's impossible. Same thing we did when we moved out. So, from between December eighth and January first, or fifth?
It is on the...
The fifth. Before, before the next council meetings coming up in January, our plan is to at least be able to have the council meetings and have the second floor of city hall. Hopefully, when we shut the whole thing down, we'll be able to plan this thing so that everybody that's supposed to be in city hall will be back in city hall. Does that make perfect sense?
It makes perfect sense, uh, we're happy.
Did I miss anything?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
We should shut down customer service on those four days, that would seem like, that cannot be done on a weekly, maybe?
It's Christmas, what is doing?
December twenty-fifth, you're saying December. What are y'all planning on doing next?
The la, is the last week of December?
The last week of December leading up to New Year's Day. It's a three-day week. What our plan is, is to take one week and move a floor. The first week that we're able to do it, we'll, we're gonna move the second floor. The next week, we're gonna move finance. And then the next week, we're going to move customer service. Um, and customer service is the three-day week.
Stuff gets moved, it always...
It's gonna get moved, that's...
The next time the matter's open, you're still closed.
We're trying to do some things proactively, too, but we, we, of course, we didn't wanna do anything until we spoke to you tonight about it, but we will be putting up signs and making people as, as aware as possible that, you know, we will be closed for those three days to get those folks set up over there.
If anybody has any problems, like if something gets cut off or anything like that, we'll go back and, you know, basically give amnesty for those days.
We're not gonna do any cutoff or anything like that during that time.
Okay.
We're just not going to do it.
So, we'll look out, we'll look out for everybody.
And if, if the city council was bored and they don't have anything to do, Mr. Perry, it's already following material services.
Yeah, Larry's already signed me up. I'm on, I'm on Ronan's team.
It's worth it for me, too.
So, that's, uh, basically the game plan for city hall move? Any questions, comments?
I do have one comment. Um, our RFP for, we do have to purchase some furniture, uh, like for the council chambers and things. RFP for that will go out tomorrow, and, um, it'll be in the Gazette on Friday and Sunday. I do have three vendors who are interested in receiving it.